I'd like to call this November 21st, 2023, regular school board meeting to order. The time is now 6:00 PM. The board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional lands of the Dunay people. Our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. We should all now stand to say the pledge. Mr. Doran will lead us. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lopez is excused. Colonel Alvarado?
Here.
Colonel Cole?
Present.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
The next item is the Harbor Freight Award Teacher Recognition. Hutcheson High School Construction Teacher Steve Ratsloff was named a $50,000 winner of the Harbor Freight Tool for Schools Prize for Teaching Excellence. Ratsloff, a construction teacher at Hutcheson High School, won $35,000 for his school program and $15,000 for himself. A total of 1.5 million was awarded to 25 public schools, skilled trade teachers, and their programs across the United States. Principal Robin Taylor will make the presentation.
All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share some just amazing success that we have are seeing at Hutcheson. But first, I want to say we have incredible teachers across this district that I could say in every single school, I can imagine that there's a teacher that should be standing right here receiving a similar recognition. Just at Hutch, we were very fortunate that the Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Teaching Excellence Award had an opportunity to recognize excellence in the career and technical education field. And so last year, Mr. Ratsloff started on this journey as what he thought was a small grant application. That small grant application turned into a notification to me through the company in, I believe, July to notify. They notified me that he was one of the top 50 applicants out of a pool of over 1,000 applicants that were viewed for this award. So yes, they looked at over 1,000 skilled trade teachers from all 50 states across the country. And this is the first Alaska recipient for the Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Award. So in October, after sitting on this information for months, wanting to share the surprise, and I couldn't, we got to honor Mr. Ratsloff at a surprise awards ceremony where he received a beautiful check. So I have it in a picture here if you want to see a closer view or didn't get to see the news article or the media, social media posting. But he received a very large check for $50,000, $35,000 of which goes directly into the program to support our students. And I believe he's already been purchasing some much-needed updated equipment. So we're very excited about that as well as a toolbox. One of the pieces of information that Mr. Ratsloff put in his information for what he thought was a grant, he said, "I think my students would say their most valuable lesson is to learn how to work, to take pride in their work, and do the best they can in any endeavor they participate in. I often focus attention on how professionals who are happy in their careers are proud of the work they do. Without pride, I believe it is difficult to be happy in a job." I watch daily as Mr. Ratsloff shares this type of desire and passion to do a job and do it well. If you have a chance to come to Hutch, which please, I encourage anybody to come, take a tour through our building, but specifically stepping into Mr. Ratsloff Building Trades area, and you can see the tiny home in action that when I last looked, it looked like they were having the inside nearing completion. So we're very excited for the work he's doing. Not only does he support the students of Hutch in the current technical education trades, Mr. Ratsloff also does a summertime special education construction class, so supporting our high school students who have disabilities to learn tools of the trade. So, Mr. Ratsloff, you're very deserving of this award, and I know you've already received your big check and flowers and cookies and all sorts of fun stuff. So this is kind of like the culminating wrap-up for him, but congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate the time to come in here and talk about this, so thank you very much.
Next, our local Aerospace Forces Association Fairbanks Chapter and the State of Alaska Teacher Recognition. Our core value is maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. North Pole High School Teacher Andrew Slagel was named Teacher of the Year for both the Local Air and Space Forces Association Fairbanks Chapter and the State of Alaska. At North Pole High School, Mr. Slagel teaches introductions to engineering, engineering design, robotics, drafting, and is well-versed in teaching all math levels. Mr. Slagel, Slagel, I'm sorry, is in his 10th year of teaching and his seventh year at North Pole High School. Principal Michelle Splain will make the presentation.
Great. I guess it's pushed now. Thank you. So I just want to, I have a couple of words that I'd like to read, and we just want to say, first of all, that we are incredibly proud of Mr. Slagel and all of the work that he is doing at North Pole High School. And he does represent our staff well in skill and passion. We are thrilled that he received this award. And one of the messages when he was presented with the award was that he is a difference-maker. And so the engineers that came and presented the award kept making that statement over and over again. And I believe that the students that stood up that day in our classroom were also talking about how Mr. Slagel is making a difference. We see him working hard all hours of the day, and then he is often there into the early or mid-evening, and he does have two small children, one of which is coming with him today. But Mr. Slagel is a driven, organized teacher who develops inspiring relationships with students and staff. His teaching practices challenge students to bring their best selves to the learning environment. Mr. Slagel's understanding of content and student learning has allowed him to build a strong engineering career pathway at North Pole High School. His extensive experience in the classroom is also demonstrated in a school-wide leadership capacity. Mr. Slagel works on the North Pole High School Leadership Team, adding voice to pivotal decisions and helping to design the yearly school plan of improvement. In each of his educational roles, he has embraced opportunities for professional development and always promotes innovative thinking that benefits student success. The North Pole High School Administration and staff are honored to work alongside Mr. Slagel and share an offering, congratulations for this prestigious award. Congratulations.
Thank you, board members, everybody that's come here, and students and family. And I'm very happy to work for Michelle, and I'm ready to go back to work on Monday. Let's do it.
Before we move to the adoption of the agenda, I wanted to let everyone know that we're going to reorder the agenda slightly and move Board Comments, Item K, to directly follow Item G, Superintendent Comments, so that if we go into an executive session, there is nothing after that for people to need to stick around for. With that said, we move to the adoption of the agenda, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Ms. Richardson, would you call the vote?
I need a second.
Sorry.
Second.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item on the agenda is public comments on reports and non-agenda items. The core value is engage with students, family, and staff and community to support student success. Public comments on report and non-agenda items are limited to three minutes per person for a maximum one hour. People who are signed up in advance through school board office to testify, in person or in Zoom, will be called upon first. If any time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour timeline has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and their city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification only. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for school board and superintendent comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may be needed to gather. We do have one person signed up, so with Ms. April Smith, please come to the dais. If you could please state your name, spell your last name, and give your area of residence, you will have three minutes.
My name is April Smith, S-M-I-T-H, and I reside in North Pole. I'm here to notify the public and the board that the notice of the intent to enter into executive session on the agenda fails to meet the statutory requirement. The statute is clear that when noticing a public governing body's intent to enter into executive session, the topic being discussed must be narrow, and it must be clearly and specifically stated in the notice. Only the notice subject may be discussed, so it must be clearly defined. In addition to laying out specific steps required for the meeting and allowable exceptions, the statute addressed in open meetings speaks about the state's policy regarding what authority the public has delegated to governing bodies. This is a synopsis. The government exists to aid in conducting the people's business. Government units should act deliberately and openly. People do not yield sovereignty to government agencies that serve them. Public servants have not been given the right to decide what is good or not good for the people to know. People should remain informed so that they may retain control over the government which they established. The Open Meetings Act should be narrowly construed to effectuate these policies and avoid unnecessary exemptions. On the state website, regarding guidance on the OMA, is linked a document that is eight pages long and clearly defines the intent and meaning of each part of the statute. I quote, "However, it is not enough to qualify for an executive session to merely say that the matter is one of pending litigation or a financial matter, as is often heard. As a practical matter, for an adverse financial impact, executive session to withstand a court challenge, there must be facts in the record to enable the court to conclude that it was clear and immediate public knowledge of the particular issue discussed that would harm the government's financial interest." End quote. This language is the exact language used by the board tonight to move into executive session under the hugely broad umbrella of financial matters so that they can talk about our money, the public money, and how they intend to use it. I submit that any member who enters this session and discusses public matters privately without proper notice, as I have demonstrated they have not given, knowingly enters into a violation of the Open Meetings Act, which is a recallable offense. In closing, once again quoting from the Governor's Office Synopsis Document Regarding Public Meetings, "Public servants have not been given the right to decide what is good or not good for the people to know. You have a sworn duty to talk about your schemes and plans in public, and we deserve to know what you want to do with our money." Thank you.
Are there any board member questions for Ms. Smith? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. We had no one else signed up for public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? If you could come up, state your name, spell your last name for the record, and give us your area of residence. You will have three minutes.
I am Megan Shamhart, S-H-A-M-H-A-R-T. I live in North Pole. I am a counseling intern at Lathrop High School, and I currently am underneath Max Ott. I am a master student at Grand Canyon University and do all of my schooling online. Oh, I'm a little nervous. I am requesting that the UAF non-student memorandum to be changed to a voluntary memorandum. This is important because it not only affects myself as a non-UAF student, but it also affects all of your school district employees. There are three things that it really affects, and that is the financial aspect, the time aspect, and the unnecessary measures that students that are continuing their education are being faced with. Financially, a non-UAF student will pay UAF $300 per internship. For the time spent, you are coordinating with UAF as well as the school district to finalize your placement. And for unnecessary measures, you're submitting your resume, autobiography, transcripts from every single institution you have been at for your education, and also the syllabus for your practicum and internships. Over the course of my program, I will pay a total of $1,200 to UAF, and like I've said, I am not a UAF student. That equals 75% of just one of my classes that I am currently paying through my student loans. As a military spouse, that money is being taken from my childcare, the gas that I drive from North Pole, and staying afloat while trying to just go through daily expenses while not getting paid for my internship. It is important to note that this is a huge barrier for adults that are continuing our education. This includes the employees that are already in your stool district. This should be voluntary because people may already have their placements that are completely lined up. And more likely than not, the employees already work in the field that they are getting their education in. This isn't a district job. I have talked to multiple people about this, but this memorandum does provide an opportunity for people who do not know where to be placed. This could be people that are moving from here or out of state, who may be a military spouse and are just needing a place to do their internship, or just a student that's here and isn't part of UAF. I am requesting this on my behalf, the district employees that are already here, and also future internship students that do not go through UAF. That's all. Thank you.
Are there any board members? Mr. Doran?
Quick question. With the memorandum with UAF, it's because they provide some placement services and supports while you're here. I know they've done that for many students.
Yes. Yes. So they, when you enter your practicum, I was given a form that said, "Please go fill this out." And when I went to actually get my Power School turned on, I am a former employee, and I could not do that because I had not gone through UAF. And so that was when I was alerted that I needed to go through UAF to be put in a placement that I already actually had placed myself in. And I took it upon myself to go to Max Ott, and I also talked to Neil Hecht, and all of the paperwork was done, but the district said, "You cannot do that because you haven't gone through UAF." So if that answers your question.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
So during your internship, UAF does provide some supervisory?
No.
Report or something and gets it back to your university?
No, GCU, and I mean, there are plenty other online universities. I know Liberty, Western Governors, and Walden are also online universities. And I talked to my counselor, and she said, "I do not need anything from UAF at all."
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I'll put myself in the queue. Could you please, it seemed like you might have pre-written that, would you mind emailing it to the board?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I get an email? Or somewhere?
Yeah. It's schoolboard@knorth, is it North Star, K-12? K12NorthStar.org.
Okay. I also have some documents that I did provide to Sarah Gillum that I can also attach to that. It just shows more in depth about what documents that they're needing and also the financial aspect that is needed from them.
If you feel comfortable doing that, or we can get them from Ms. Gillum, too. Anything that comes through our email becomes public record, so if it's not confidential...
That's totally fine. I mean, those are parts of UAF things that are given to students as well, so I have no problem. I'm trying to make change, so.
Thank you. I really appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public comment? Could you please say your first name, spell your last name, and provide your area of residence? You all have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Janet Farris, F-A-R-R-I-S. I reside in North Pole. I would like to introduce myself, especially to the new board members. I am the Fort Wainwright School Liaison Officer. I would like to remind the board in the school district and all schools that the Purple Star School designation application is due December 31st. I would like to say many, many schools have been working very diligently in getting that application done. And Ernest Kincaid, the Ison Air Force Slow, who's sitting behind me, and I have been honored to give trainings to the schools in the area to help them become Purple Star schools. For those who are not aware, the importance of Purple Star Designation Schools is that it helps military-connected students and their families to understand they will be supported within the school district and within the schools. And the great thing about the Purple Star School Designation Award, everything that's required for military-connected students will benefit all students. So please continue to give your support to the schools to become Purple Star schools. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to provide testimony? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. The next item on the agenda is the President's Report. Our goal is to ensure students, staff, and families in the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Earlier this month, the board had the opportunity to attend the annual ASB Conference and learn from presenters' expertise in many diverse education-related fields. One session in particular I attended was on community partnerships and the collective impact framework that the community of Sitka has used in recent years. This approach leverages collaborative efforts of existing community resources and maximizes the positive influence of those available community resources. Hearing of the tremendous success this framework has had in Sitka, I'm eager to explore such a framework and its potential benefits for Fairbanks. As part of the conference, the board also worked with other members of boards, with other member boards of ASB to pass resolutions to guide our advocacy efforts in the coming year. One resolution of particular note is the Base Student Allocation, or BSA Funding Increase Resolution. This resolution passed by the body of ASB called for an increase in the BSA of no less than $1,655. After years of flat funding, our public education system, and the detrimental effects of inflation, our public schools cannot afford another year of outside the BSA funding, or worse, continued flat funding of our public education system. I encourage us all to use our collective voices to advocate to the state legislature and the government to let them know that Alaskans value their public education system and want the best education possible for our students. A BSA increase of no less than $1,655 would go a long way in allowing our public schools here locally to meet the needs of our district students. Today, I had the opportunity to attend celebrations at two of our district schools, Wood River and Denali. Denali held its ninth annual Thanksgiving celebration. It was delight to see their students dressed up and enjoying a delicious meal together while being entertained by other district students performing as part of the Lathrop Band and Choir. At Wood River, I joined students in celebrating Alaska Native Heritage Month, where they made fry bread, danced, and listened to native fiddle music, tried their hands at various WIO events, and learned from our very own Bree Gray about her cultural heritage and traditional practices she grew up learning. It made for a beautiful afternoon spent with students, seeing firsthand all the hard work our educators and community partners put into making our schools such a great place to grow and learn. I'd like to end with gratitude. As we embrace this season of gratitude, I want to convey my heartfelt appreciation for the unwavering dedication of our district's educators, both past and present. Exceptional educators like Sandy Buhyte, Bill Ernst, Woody Winstrom, or Maida Buckley, and numerous others have left an indelible mark on my own life. Their impact was immeasurable, and I am certain that the unwavering commitment of the devoted educators at Boreal Sun will similarly shape my own children's lives. However, my family's educational experience is in no way unique. All across our district, educators are changing students' lives for the better. A profound work of educating a child holds the power to change the world. I extend my deepest gratitude to the educators in our community, whose efforts often go unsung, yet they tirelessly give of themselves each and every day. Your dedication makes our community better each day, and I am genuinely grateful for your presence in our community and our school district. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent Report. Dr. Minor, will you provide your report?
Thank you, President Hardy. I'd like to start with congratulating Arctic Light Elementary School, as they were selected as a national ESEA Distinguished School Recognition Program in Category III, and that means that they're showing excellence in serving special populations of students, specifically our ELL students. And Arctic Light is one of up to 100 schools throughout the country, being nationally recognized, and only two schools per state can be named each year. So huge congratulations to Arctic Light and our ELL staff that is providing programming there. The school district has been awarded $200,000 through the Alaska Workforce and Future The school district has been awarded $200,000 through the Alaska Workforce and Fusion Grant for recruitment, training, and retention of Alaska employees. The district will use these funds and FY24 to reimburse teachers for tuition costs related to the keys to literacy training, fund 50 teachers to attend the Science of Reading Symposium in April, fund three facilities management employees to receive school facilities, HVAC, and electrician training, fund three high school student interns to provide classroom support, and finally, to fund recruitment and advertising materials to join the workforce here in the Fairbanks-North Star Borough School District. The acceptance for this grant will come before the board in January, and we're very excited about these additional funds and the opportunities they'll provide. A shout out to the West Valley Student Climate Defense League as they're working to reduce waste and protect the environment in our community. One of the initiatives that they've found success with and are working throughout our district in is collecting paper from classrooms throughout schools and bringing it to a central recycling facility. They received some small grant funds for recycling bins, and they're reaching out to teachers throughout the district, for interested teachers throughout the district that might be interested in participating in this recycling program. A shout out to our Nutritional Services Department. I was recently visiting Ryan Middle School, and off to the side, they had this fancy banquet set up. And I was like, whoa, what is this? I haven't seen this before. And they had a company there that was taste-testing new foods that might be an option for our Nutritional Services Department to adopt. And after students got to taste these three entrees, they got to vote whether or not they liked the foods. And then they present that data back to our Nutritional Services Team, and that's part of the process for the ways that we have new foods introduced to our schools. And this is just one way that our Nutritional Services Team collects data, and I just love that they were including student voice in the decisions that they're making. And so a shout out to their department. I did want to comment on the memorandum of agreement with UAF for providing intern services for respective interns. That memorandum of agreement was put in place to ensure that applicants had the appropriate coursework to do their student teaching experience within our schools. When that memorandum of agreement was in place, which was in 2015, you can imagine it was a bit of a different world, where there were many more potential interns that the district had coming into the district than we do now. We have had conversations recently about revisiting that MOU with UAF, specifically the $300, because we know that might be a barrier to some wanting to intern in our district. So we are aware of potential challenges specifically with that $300, and that's something that we're looking at an administrative level. And I can be happy to provide the board with more details around that. I wanted to share a takeaway from the recent Alaska Association of School Boards Conference. And one of the presenters, Troy Hutchings, he talked a lot about ethics and education and stated, we have to give ourselves permissions to have difficult conversations. We do this as we always have our focus on continuous improvement to ensure our students are receiving the best educational opportunities we can provide. And I'd like to thank our educators who have advocated for additional funding over the past years and have shared their challenges with our legislators and Borough Assembly members of impacts when we don't have adequate funding for public education. I want our educators to know they're supported in their advocacy efforts and to feel comfortable talking about the challenges public schools face with inadequate educational funding. I'd like to thank donors, specifically within the last two weeks that have donated to programs and schools within our district. Golden Heart VFW, Alaska Community Foundation, Matthew Fueling Fund, Doian Limited, Snap Mobile, Inc., Fairbanks Youth Sports, Delta Airlines, and Fairbanks Emblem Club, all donated within the last couple of weeks. Also would like to thank United Way for donating winter coats to many of our schools for students in need. That's a huge help for our students, especially as we enter these cold winter months. I'd like to conclude similarly to President Hardy. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I'm very thankful for the amazing educators we have throughout our district that sacrifice on a daily basis to ensure our students have an excellent education every day. Thankful for our partners, including the parents and guardians that support their children every day, day in and day out, to do their very best in schools. I know we've had several Thanksgiving lunches throughout the district today, and I'd like to thank all the donors and volunteers and staff members that made those opportunities possible for our students. Lastly, I'm thankful for the board, for the opportunity to serve in the place of the superintendency. We have incredible board members, and I'm looking forward to our work together ahead. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Dorn, if you have a question?
Thank you for their report and also for the note on the UAF memorandum that was referenced earlier in testimony today. And I guess just a reflection as you're looking at that, and I'm glad to see, you know, since 2015, enough time has passed and events that does impact that. But also, as you're entering that, I wanted to note the support and service that UAF has given to interns from other schools and that often enough time as they're working out placements for UAF students within our district, making sure there's opportunity for all. And I know that other universities at times have called upon UAF to say, could you check in on this student? And it may be small, but it's another piece of the pie. So I think that cooperative membership, as you updated and look there, or not membership, but agreement, covers a lot of bases.
Seeing no other comments, we will move on to, and this is where I reordered the agenda. So everybody ready for a curveball? Board and superintendent comments. Starting down on the end, Colonel Cole.
No comments. Thank you.
Right. Colonel Alvarado?
First, congratulations to the new folks on the board. It is absolutely wonderful seeing you, and I look forward to meeting you. I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I love, just came back from the Orlando where we did the American Defense Communities, where I went down with Mayor Ward, with Ms. Smart, as well as some other folks. And it was an absolutely fantastic opportunity to talk to different communities and different community leaders, to talk about the three things we all care about, which is housing, which is schools, as well as childcare. And it was absolutely incredible to hear about how we are growing fantastically as a community collectively, you know, whether it's our civilian partners and us on Wayne Wright, and then us on Iowasun as well, growing together. Lot of great lessons learned, but it definitely reiterated the fact that this is something we're going to continue to do, we're going to continue to grow together. It's going to be a long journey, everybody is doing it. But I was really, really proud to hear of all the things that Fairbanks was talked about specifically, you know, best practices and things that we were moving up on from small nuclear reactor, but all that is contingent on great partnership with all of us. So thank you very much. I'm so proud, so proud to be a part of the Fairbanks team, and I'm very proud to bring that back, and I look forward to much more deliberate partnership with you guys in the future. So great to see your faces and glad to be back. Thank you.
Welcome back. Ms. Maple?
I don't have any comment at this time. Thank you.
Right. Mrs. Burnett?
Thank you. Today, I had a great opportunity to talk with the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Bishop, great lady, and we had the opportunity to discuss things about the Alaska REEDS Act and funding. And I look forward to being able to set up a future meeting with her, possibly next month, with Dr. Minor and Mr. DeGraw. I think that'd be a great opportunity to advocate for funding, especially related to the needs that we have when it comes to fully implementing the Alaska REEDS Act. A big shout out to our area schools who were holding food drives for the food bank for the holiday season. That's such an amazing thing. The food bank does so many great things here in our community, and I just hats off to you students out there and the teachers and just everybody who pitched in on that. That's absolutely amazing. I look forward to seeing what the numbers look like. Congratulations to West Valley's Junior ROTC Rifle Team for winning the Jordan Dure Memorial in Anchorage. That's really awesome. Congratulations, guys. And then there was a notice that went out from ASA. And as a sports parent, I just want to remind families out there that we love when parents and friends and families come and partake in all the events, but we need to remember that these are students. We are representing our schools, we're representing the whole district and the interior, and it is super important that we remember the officials out there are doing a job, our students are out there playing a sport, it doesn't matter what team they're on. Sportsmanship is key, and bullying of any type, meanness at any type at sporting events, it just, we need to make that stop. And as parents and grownups, we need to be the role models of that. So just when you're at a high school game, you're participating in events, you know, you see it, speak out, let people know, you know, we got to keep that calm and just enjoy sports. Because let me tell you, these kids, they do some amazing things out there, and watching them play the things that they love and do the things they love, it's, there's nothing better. So let's just make sure that we're doing great out there, and a big happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope you guys enjoy your breaks out there, and that's it.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. Yeah, so I wanted to say, you know, that in regards to the AASB conference, I really appreciated the opportunity to go down there to Anchorage and learn more about how to be an effective board member, how to hold effective meetings. I thought the trainings were very good, and the opportunity to speak with other school boards around the state is something that I feel was very valuable, both in terms of the ability to advocate together with other school districts as well as just getting that networking and that breadth of experience from folks who have served much longer than I have in my first month here. And so really appreciated that. Also, just a great opportunity to get to know my fellow board members better and Superintendent Minor. It was a great trip. I feel like it was very productive, and I learned a lot. I also wanted to quickly shout out that it is Native American Heritage Day this Friday, and just congratulations to all who celebrate. And just to mention that, you know, I hope everyone has a very safe, productive, and wholesome holiday weekend. So thank you.
Mr. Dorn?
I'll also mention the Alaska School Boards Conference, the opportunity to be there, and our professional growth. Lots of little pieces that made a difference, but two things stood out to me. We had an opportunity for participating in a full day of training and background on artificial intelligence. And I have mixed feelings about it. It's artificial, so what's about it, you know? But I found it very, very good. I mean, informative, how it's developing, it's long, decades and decades and decades of history actually behind it. And some of the things too that are on the horizon, opportunities as well as challenges. And I thought it was well done and presented with some real practicalities that people have experienced with it in using it and developing it, and then helping others in its use, particularly in education. The other, as Dr. Minor referenced, one of the speakers, Troy Hutchings, who talked about the difference between professional conduct and professional ethics. And ethics is what we want to do, not what we don't want to do. Conduct more is what we should not do. And what struck me is he talked from practical experience as an educator and really spoke to what our educators do on a regular basis for students and how they really do their best. And they try things, and they're working in the best interest of students. And I think that ethics piece that he talked about is so important. And he really did a great, I think, tribute to educators, but also what we have to do as a profession to make sure that we, in a sense, protect educators, but we encourage them to do the right development of building relationships with students. And then there were opportunities to share in a various number of settings there. So a very, very valuable experience to have gone to. I was asked today, as several as were going around, had opportunities to visit some special events at school. One of the reporters there said, well, what are you thankful for as a school board member? And I said, you know, the biggest thing is that we get to get into schools. We get to see students, teachers, staff members on the front line. And whether it is at a special event, whether it's in the classroom, if you want, on a normal delivery day of instruction and learning. But we see their smiles, we see their efforts, we see their hard work, we see their compassion, their commitment. And that's what I'm really thankful for, that opportunity to be on the board and to be part of a district where we see so many great things happening in schools and classrooms and people really doing what Troy Hutchings said, doing the best for students, building those connections and supporting them. And that related to another piece that, just because it's been in the news recently, the recent Attorney General's letter, which, as it's written up in several news reports, and when you read the letter, he implies that our educators are not doing the job they should be doing, and that is wrong. Our educators are working really hard and doing the right things for our kids. And I want to reinforce that because I think our educators need to know that message. We are in full compliance. We have a policy on, in regard to that letter, which affirms what we've done, that working relationship that teachers and work with parents on on a regular basis, work with students on on a regular basis to meet their needs, their concerns, while also providing a solid and enriching curriculum. The last thing I wanted to say that is, I hope that as we move forward as a board through the chair, that we'll get a chance to maybe review the lottery process. We should be coming up soon on those having to be given out. But I think looking at those and seeing where they're working well when we talk about equity, education equity, that how it's working well and where we may need to do some tweaks. I'm particularly thanking for Hutchinson and North Star College Schools, but that we get that on the calendar, so.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Thank you, President Hardy. It was a great joy to be able to attend the AASB conference and especially to engage and interact with our new board members and just to see their enthusiasm and networking ability. Both of the keynote speakers were very enlightened with the AI, learning about that and how we can use it as a tool and make sure that our students look at it as a way to, you know, enhance and help them achieve what they need to do and partner and not be fearful, but just do our research and have it in place. Also, I will be traveling November 28 through December 3 for a CTE conference in Phoenix. So I'm looking forward to being able to engage with the different presenters and maybe bring back some information. I already have ideas running around through my brain. So, you know, it's so exciting to be able to congratulate and acknowledge the great work that our educators do in this community. They're always looking and seeking to enhance their teaching ability and what they bring to the classroom. So this will be a really exciting time. Also, I just want to thank everybody and encourage people to just really hold on to those loved ones, enjoy your holiday time. And I'm entering into a season of first for my family with the loss of our grandson. But, you know, we get strength and we go day by day. And so just looking forward to those people in the community. Please seek out all these awesome places. There are numerous churches, halls, and places where you can, you know, have some fellowship time, camaraderie, and have time, camaraderie and have a good meal, just take care of yourself and thank you.
Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. I want to thank the community and the schools for supporting our students and families and neighbors. As of earlier today, the food bank still needs turkeys, breads, yams, pies and stuffing. They're located off of 26th Avenue near South Cushman. I also want to thank the whole board and Dr. Minart for attending such a valuable professional development with AASB earlier this month. I appreciated the work we were able to accomplish with the other boards across the state for the Students of Alaska. It was, it was big and it was impressive. And finally, yesterday was Transgender Day of Remembrance, a day that honors the memory of transgender people whose lives were lost in acts of anti-transgender violence. This day was started in 1999 by transgender advocate Gwendolyn Ann Smith as a vigil to honor the memory of Rita Hester, a transgender woman who was killed in 1998. The vigil commemorated all of the transgender people lost to violence since Rita Hester's death and became an important tradition that has become the annual Transgender Day of Remembrance. I want to end with Gwendolyn Ann Smith's words. She said, "Transgender Day of Remembrance seeks to highlight the losses we face due to anti-transgender bigotry and violence. I am no stranger to the need to fight for our rights and the right to simply exist is first and foremost. With so many seeking to erase transgender people, sometimes in the most brutal ways, it is vitally important that those we lose are remembered and that we continue to fight for justice." Thanks.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Policy 1041 dot, or point three, Students' Rights and Responsibilities Rights Search and Seizure. This is our second reading. May I have a motion?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing and adoption of Policy 1041.3, Student Rights and Responsibilities Rights Search and Seizure.
Second.
Is there any board discussion on this topic? Mr. Burgess and then Mr. Doran.
Yeah, thank you. I brought this up at the last reading, that I had concerns about the lack of definition of the term reasonable suspicion. I, I do think that it's important for that to be clearly defined and for it to be clear to any personnel that would potentially be conducting a search. And I could see, you know, I, I'm considering making a motion here, but I also wanted to entertain the idea of making that more clear through the administrative regulation that I assume will be revised following this. And, and also I have talked with the borough attorney and she mentioned a training that has been given to principals in the past on this issue. I was provided the slides for that, but honestly, I didn't have time to review them. And I just wanted to ask the administration through the chair if that, if that training is ongoing and if it is planned to be presented to any building administrators.
Dr. Minert.
Yes, yes, it is ongoing and for the past two years, we've brought Clint Campion in outside council to provide a day-long training for principals and assistant principals on search and seizure. We do feel it's like one of those critical areas where we want to make sure that we're getting it right and so we've provided that training the last two years. Jill Dolan also did follow up with some of the training materials she's provided in the past, so we'll ensure that, you know, the trainings that have been provided, information she's provided are incorporated into those future trainings. I also think, yes, we could divine reasonable suspicion and make sure that that's clear within administrative regulation, but that is part of the training that principals and assistant principals understand what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doran.
If I could ask through the chair, the administration to kind of give an update between first and second reading, I know you did take some of the input from our conversation at our last meeting, if you could highlight some of those things that you brought in for the public.
Diane or Sarah, would you mind going over those changes?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Doran. So we did change the formatting a little bit for the coding, so you can see we changed some of that. So just if you're referencing it, referencing it so that it's easier to follow in terms of AASB language that we're not recommending and then the changes that we are recommending. We did at the end of the first paragraph, provide a grounds for understanding what building administration is, so principals, assistant principals, head teachers, directors of programs or designees. We added also both the cross references, so 631.1 is a cross reference that helps define building administration and then also 324 is a cross reference to help define building administration. We also made sure we were consistent in that language throughout, so using just building administration. There are two places where we don't use building administration, so if, I'm gonna find the right way to reference that, there's one place where it says school authorities and we did believe that that was the right term for that situation because it was referring to, it's in the second paragraph under the list of determining reasonable suspicion. So school authorities have the right to temporarily seize things if they're, it says if they're disrupting or interfering. So that extends to allow teachers or safety assistants to temporarily seize things that are visible that they could. And then there's also a place where it refers to directly from statute to school officers or school district officers, so that is different. We made the, there was one place where Mr. Doran noted a grammatical error, so we updated that and I think that was the summary of the changes we made.
Okay. Ms. Marotti.
I wanted to thank Ms. Gillum and Ms. Dillard for hearing my cry last time and working really creatively to ensure that I could read this. Thank you so much. I've never felt more listened to. And just a quick question, under search of facility, it's on the last page and it's, is this the one where you kept the original language where it says intention of school district officials and it's changed to officers? And what is a school district officer?
So that's the direct language. Thank you, Ms. Marotti, for the question. That's the direct language from the statute that's referenced right before that, so we wanted to be consistent with the statute language, but we would interpret that to also be building administration.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burnett.
Thank you. I just wanted to throw my support behind Mr. Burgess's request and if it could go in AR, that, that would be great too. With defining and just making sure we're clear on the reasonable suspicion, I could foresee that as a problem, so I just, I wanted to throw my support behind that. Thank you.
Mr. Doran, did you have another?
Yes, I had another question. Regarding the search of a student's cellphone or other electronic device, could you just talk a little bit more about that? I think I understand the, the reason for not doing unless you have the parent's consent because very often, at least, not always, but very often, that phone is probably the property of the, of the parent. There are some students who have their own and maybe you could make a distinction between that, if there should be one here. And give us just some examples of what the limited conditions might be in order to search those things and I'm thinking because of a lot of social media types of issues that come up.
Thank you for the question. So just first, part of reasonable suspicion speaks to the fact that any kind of search needs to be not excessively intrusive and when you go into a cellphone, it is a big can of worms that you could be looking for one thing that was the intent of your search and then you're finding things that are way off the intent of your search. So, so putting in this language is more in line with that reasonable suspicion standard. As for specific examples that come up in schools for searches?
I think the specific example we were talking about, if we find a phone that we could unlock it or not unlock it, but like, you know, look at it and if it has a student name or a recognizing thing, then we could get the phone back to the individual, but, you know, that would be clearly defined in AR and genuine, like generally, we're saying that we're not searching students' phones even in a case of, you know, social media issues, like we would conduct an investigation when, oftentimes, we can do that without the administrator taking the phone and going through it themselves and that happens on a regular basis.
Can I do a follow-up?
Go ahead.
Okay, and also on the cellphone, and I may be out of date on this, but I know there was conversations in terms of where a cellphone might be turned over to the police in certain circumstances rather than giving back to the student or the parent. Is that still a possibility? I mean, a lot dependent on circumstances and stuff, but.
I mean, I think that's always a possibility. We would err on the side of caution and safety and if we thought that was an extreme safety issue, we would contact law enforcement and they would make, you know, the appropriate determination whether or not they needed to confiscate that phone.
Great, thank you. And I'll have a comment later.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. So another thing that we had discussed at the last meeting was the definition of building administration and I thank the administration for improving that definition. I would like to suggest that we could even do a little bit better and with that in mind, I would like to move to amend by removing the parenthetical at the beginning of the first paragraph and replacing it with the following sentence. Building administration is defined in Policy 631.1 and for the purposes of this section includes principals, assistant principals, head teachers, directors of programs or their designees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the?
Do we have it repeated so we have the full amendment?
Sure. Mr. Burgess, could you please repeat your amendment?
Yes. So I would remove the parenthetical at the end of the first paragraph, so end that sentence there at building administration. And then the next sentence would read, building administration is defined in Policy 631.1 and for the purposes of this section includes principals, assistant principals, head teachers, directors of programs or their designees.
So a yes vote will add that language and a no vote will not. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We are back to the main motion as amended. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Ms. Burnett and then Mr. Doran.
I'm just curious with this, and maybe this would, should have been before that. So we have the cross references up at the top that have the 631.1, the 1041.3, 324. That will stay, correct? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Doran has reminded me, but I've forgotten to ask if there is any public comment on this agenda item at this time. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I've gone over this policy a lot of different times and actually for tonight, I had rewritten a section of it on the, especially the search of student and student possessions. And I, I was looking for clarity and I wasn't clear in my own writing. I wasn't pleased with my own revision of it. And what it struck me is that, so I'm not going to bring that amendment forward, but at this time, I'm not in favor of this policy. Every time I read it, I find an awkwardness with it. Some pieces of, as I would read it, didn't quite make sense to me, wasn't clear. And to the point where I took it and I took all the deletions out of it and just said, okay, this is what it'll read. And what strikes me is, I really want to say is, thank you to the administration for working on this. And I know Ms. Gillum has commented, that's one of the first things she wound up on her desk and put this together. I think where my concerns are, is we're trying to blend and mesh too much. It was a policy that we've had in practice for quite a number of years, updated a while ago. It needed updating. We need to do something more with it. And the, we're also trying to be cognizant of the model, School Boards Association of School Board, Alaska Association of School Boards, policy language. It's a model, it's a sample, an example, because we're going to be moving on to their platform, not necessarily their policy, because we have good policies. But cognizant of what they've learned over the years and what we've learned over the years, that I just felt the blending of trying to keep, of trying to look at our policy, update our policy and consider another policy model that's out there has lent to an awkwardness of it. And I don't think we're ready for it yet. And I would, so I'm going to encourage that we don't move it forward as such. If we need to update ours, let's update it in terms of what we have, keeping in mind the ASB language. But I hope that as we go forward, the, what might be here and as board and the administration decides that, no, this meets a need that we have right now, that we are cautious about trying to be blending policies. I know we're going to be reviewing all our policies over some period of time. We don't have to change them all. We don't have to take sections from the model AASB policies, but we do need to look at, what do we have, is it, what we have, is it good? Does it meet our needs? Does it need to be updated? And then go from there. So every time I did a read on it, I found that as I was trying to draft some language, I was falling into the same thing. I was trying to take, blend all these suggestions and it wasn't coming out the right way. I think it cluttered our policy more than benefited it, so. So I do have some ongoing concerns with it. I realize that that, in my mind at least, that was the confusion that I was seeing with this, we're trying to be blending too many things in too fast a timeframe and that perhaps we need to slow that down and make sure that we have, we're looking at our policy, is it good? Does it need updating? What models are out there? AASB is one model. There are others in other districts as well that we've learned from.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Now that's the most creative way I've heard to keep me quiet. Well done. So, and I will stop with that anyway. Thank you.
Were there any other board comments? Ms. Burnett and Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, I just have one more comment. I just wanted it to be known. I just wanted it to be known that I am still kind of struggling. I semi-support Mr. Dorn's comments, mainly around the reasonable suspicion and reasonable attempts. I'm just struggling with that phrasing of words. I understand probable cause, but reasonable suspicion is different to me, and I'm just trying to make sense of that. And in a reasonable attempt to get a hold or notify a student's parents or guardian, I have, over the years, numerous times, heard from teachers, well, we tried to get a hold of you. I didn't get a phone call, I didn't get an email, I didn't get a text message, so how were you trying to get a hold of me? You know, my emergency contacts weren't contacted, so I just, I really would like to understand what reasonable attempt is, as well.
Mr. Burgess.
I think I've spoken a couple of times already. If there's anyone who hasn't spoken and would like to go first, I would yield to them.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you, Mr. Burgess, and President Hardy. Through the chair, to the administration, are reasonable attempt or reasonable suspicion, are they defined or outlined in the AR? And I'm searching them right now.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if they are, but we can certainly outline those clearly in administrative regulation, if that's a concern for the board. Reasonable suspicion is something that is, you know, ingrained in training with principals and assistant principals, when they're looking at conducting searches. So, I am confident that they understand what that is, and that they would follow the letter of the law with reasonable suspicion. And really, that means that any reasonable person would suspect that a, like, crime or a disciplinary issue was in the process of being committed and had been committed, and thus, like, justifies reasonable suspicion on the part of the principal or assistant principal. In terms of the readability of this policy, we certainly worked hard to try to make it as clear as possible. I do think AASB provides some good additions to the policy, and we chose to put those in. I really liked the additional language in determining whether reasonable suspicion for a search exists, and then it outlines criteria that principals would go through to help determine reasonable suspicion. That wasn't in our current policy, but that came out of AASB's model policy. And then also, the big addition for ensuring that we're not searching students' cellphones, that's something that's been recommended to us by our legal team for multiple years now, and I do think that's important to get into policy as soon as possible.
Go ahead, Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. I did just find the AR, the AR needs a lot of work. So, I am actually in support of this policy with the caveat that the AR is fully updated and brought back to the board for review, not approval, because we don't approve ARs, to ensure that it meets the intent of this new policy. And I agree with Dr. Minor, the AASB policy, merging that with our current policy, really brought that policy into 2023. And that is why I do support this policy update with the AASB policy to make it current. So, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Burnett? Not Mr. Burnett, you both have switched around me. Mr. Burgess, and then Ms. Burnett.
Thank you. Yep, that B-U-R just gets you. That's okay. So, I would like to revisit the reasonable suspicion and the definition of that. And I did go ahead and review the legal decision that is referenced in this AR. And so, I'm taking language from that to make the following motion. I move to amend the second paragraph on page one to read as follows: The board authorizes building administration to conduct searches when there is reasonable suspicion for the search, period. Reasonable suspicion is defined as reasonable grounds for suspecting a search will uncover evidence that a student violated the law or the rules of the district or the school, and provided that the extent of the search is related to its purpose and is not overly intrusive.
Is there any board discussion on this amendment? Mr. Dorn?
Okay. I'm assuming that has been sent to the clerk, so she's got the full writing. To the amendment, I guess, that continues my concern that, what are we, what are we throwing in here? Not opposed to the amendment, because I think it adds information, it adds clarity, but I am concerned that we're, again, running into the same type of thing, that we just keep adding on to this. And I think it needs to be looked at as a, as a full picture. So, I guess that's, that's my concern for the amendment at this point.
I think I'm going to put myself in the queue. My question is, I believe a lot of this reasonable suspicion, or, I'm blanking on the other phrase, a reasonable person, that is something defined in law and also ethics. And so, I'm wondering if the reason why there might be a lot of uncomfortability among the board is because we are relying on legal understanding of things that a novice person might not have. But policies are written in order to make it clear how we will interface with law enforcement and other entities. So, I don't know that we're ever going to be able to define every last legal term within our policy, but the intent is to give our educators and our administration the ability to protect students' rights, protect, you know, this is about their, the rights they have within our school buildings, to their property, to what they have, while also empowering our educators to act in a reasonable manner for student's safety. So, I'm not opposed to the amendments, but I feel like we keep making these amendments because we're not lawyers, and we want things clearly defined. And I, I think the policy is needed, and that AR might be another way, or understanding that that's why those legal references are there. Otherwise, all our policies will end up being extremely long when they interface with law enforcement or legal terms. Yep. Are there other discussions from the board? Ms. Sanderson?
Yes. Having been in classrooms and been privy to watch this procedure happen, I just think that our language is clear, so that, because it's not always administrators who's doing the searching, or who discovers. Your safety officer and TAs work really close with students, and so would be at least reporting if there was an issue. So, I do think that we should be cautionary about the language change. We could just defer and then have it looked at again and clarified, and see, as long as we have a compliance, that it's clear what staff is doing this searching and who has that authority, I think that would be the place where I would stand, because how I've seen this operate in our, in our school districts.
Is there other discussion on this amendment? And I'm seeing Ms. Burnett, and then we'll go to Mr. Dorn.
Yeah, I just want to say, like, if we could go back to what Ms. Marotti was saying earlier, a revamp of the AR, define these there, I think that would be a good place for it. So, you know, just to put the definitions in the AR, and then, yeah, that's where it at. So, I support Ms. Marotti.
Mr. Dorn?
Through the chair, to the administration, my concern, I'm leaning towards opposing the amendment, because it's also citing a specific legal opinion, legal statement, but when that changes, then we have to come back and change the whole policy. Whereas, if it's referenced and perhaps clarified within the AR, again, along the lines that Ms. Hardy had said, Ms. Hardy had said about our policy is not getting too long, but that could be addressed in the AR readily, and, and be able to more easily adjust if there are further legal decisions that would impact this. Am I correct on that?
You are correct on that. That's, administrative regulation is usually where we flesh out a lot of the details of the policy. Policies are usually fairly broad, and then the fine brushstrokes are in administrative regulation, so you're right on with that. Mr. Dorn?
Thank you.
Is there any other board discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote? Do you want me to clarify? Okay. This is a vote on the amendment by Mr. Burgess, and I believe he sent you the language. I don't have it. Would you like to read it, or Mr. Burgess, would you, again, for clarification?
Yeah, I can do that. The amendment would read, it would replace the second paragraph, so that the second paragraph reads: The board authorizes building administration to conduct searches when there is reasonable suspicion for the search, period. Reasonable suspicion is defined as reasonable grounds for suspecting a search will uncover evidence that a student violated the law or the rules of the district or the school, and provided that the extent of the search is related to its purpose and is not overly
Seeing no other board comment, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the amendment?
Colonel Cole?
Yeah, I abstain.
Excuse me?
Abstain. No vote.
Okay. Colonel Alvarado?
I'm going to abstain as well, because this is something that else is getting into a legal realm, and I'm not comfortable saying or talking about it without that ramification.
Thank you. Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
No.
Mrs. Burnett?
No.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Mrs. Hardy? Motion failed.
We are back to the main motion. Was there any other board discussion on the main motion? Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, thank you. So, you may have noticed, I thought long and hard about whether or not to vote for my own amendment. And, and I do, I understand the arguments being made, that it might make things overly long and complicated. I, I do have concerns, even looking at that legal decision, I really don't think it's well-defined there, to be perfectly honest. So, I think the training and the AR are great avenues for us to clarify this, and with that in mind, and with other board member comments in mind as well, I do think that there's still room for improvement in this policy. However, I think that it is also an improvement on the previous version, and I am going to support it tonight. Thank you.
Are there any other board member comments? Colonel Cole?
Yes, hi. So, let me give you a reason why we abstain, all right? So, not a lot of experience outside the military, okay? We do do searches in seizures in the military, right? Commanders, or in this case, school administration, are the ones that would authorize a search or a seizure. But before we do a search and seizure, we have lawyers that we call, and we outline our justification to conduct the search or seizure. Those lawyers provide us advice, specifically what we can search or seize based off the information that we're giving them, which is basically your, your reasonable justification that we're trying to argue here, okay? When we do a search or seizure without legal advice, anything comes of it, we get into a lot of trouble on the military side. We, the military gives us lawyers to protect commanders and give them that advice. May not be the case here for, you know, our school administrators, but this is the reason why, you know, Colonel Alvarado and I are kind of abstaining for putting some type of legal determination into policy, so. But that's just an example. It's just hard for me to sort of understand what our principals will be going to, taking a look at the policy, because we have lawyers that we just reach out to with a phone call. And we have lawyers that are in 24-hour phone calls that rotate the duty, so any commander can give them a call when something comes up, like in this case. So, thank you.
Colonel Alvarado?
And I completely agree with Colonel Cole, and it's not only protecting the commanders, but it's also protecting the constitutionality of those that are being potentially searched. So, I have authorized two searches as a magistrate at Isles and Air Force Base in the past, in the past few weeks. And while I understand the spirit and the intent, and conceptual, I support what we're trying to go with it, you know, it is definitely the, if I don't have the lawyer, and in this case, I'll work with OSI or something like that, if I don't have the lawyer and we're not on the same page, then this actually stands to get in the way, violate that person's constitutional rights, even if we do believe that, and that creates a longer down-the-road issue. So, again, it's not to be obstructive, and it's just, that's what our hesitation is for. All about protecting our folks, and that's the intent of what we're trying to do here. But there is the protection of our staff members that would be doing it, and the protection of the person that is there. So, again, not trying to flip card tables with people's drinks on them, but that's, that's the intent.
Are there any other board comments? Seeing none, I will finally add mine. I do support this policy, and I would like to thank the board. We, we had a robust process in this, and I really appreciated the depth and thoroughness of board members. I like that it now talks about consent, which is so important to understand. I like that it was a mix of AASB model policies that have been reviewed by multiple legal opinions, so that we can stand firmly behind that, and that it came through our entire process. I think that sometimes, we're going to let perfection get in the way of good, and we need an updated policy. Is it perfect? No. But perfect isn't always attainable. I do want to say that my yes vote, I would really like, as a part of that, to ask for a report on the finished AR when it is done, so that it can both inform the board, so we know what is in our ARs often, we don't go and look to read when they've been updated, and also inform the public, since this is a public discussion, and that way, everybody understands what this more legal process of our policies looks like as it interfaces with our law enforcement. With that, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the main motion as amended, because it has been amended once?
Colonel Alvarado?
Abstain.
Colonel Cole?
Abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Dorn?
No.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is the superintendent evaluation template. Our core value is maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire a high achievement. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the superintendent evaluation template for the 2324 school year.
Is there any board discussion on this? Mr. Dorn?
Okay. I'll start out with saying- I'll start out with saying, thank you for working on it, the administration for it. I think this is a step forward and an improvement over what we've had. I do have two things that I'm concerned about, plus just an edit, which, in the final version, I would suggest we spell out FNASBSD as a district form. We'd have that. The, the main concern I have as presented is the very last part where it has contractual considerations. I would, and I will make a motion here in a moment, but I'd like to explain why. Let me go ahead and make the motion. I would move to amend the evaluation by removing, so I move to remove Section 9 contractual considerations, and if it's seconded, I'll address it.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Dorn, would you like to speak to your motion?
Okay. Contractual considerations should be kept separate from the evaluation. Actually, in state law, when it requires evaluations of certificated staff, which includes the superintendent, they are to be geared towards improvement of performance. And even what we, what we do, and I have decades of experience of doing evaluations, they are not the basis for hiring, firing, retention, termination. They are geared for looking at that improvement, giving feedback to improve performance. There may be steps that lead out of the evaluation that should, that may lead to further actions that could then lead to termination or continuation of employment, those types of things. But the evaluation itself is geared towards giving that feedback and looking for the improved performance, and as well as continued good performance that you're really looking at. And so putting contractual considerations in there are really, these are two separate things. They should be kept separate. I think it also is important that those negotiations may be separately, that are, should, when you sit down for the negotiation piece, it would be separate from the evaluation. If you're mixing those, it can lead to a lot of confusion. And so, on the two things, one of what state law says evaluation is, as well as really what our district policies and practice has been in terms of the evaluations, that, that is, that is input for the employee, and the other, anything else is separate from that. And so, that's why I feel that that should be removed. The signing of it, the signing is the acknowledgement of the evaluation. And we also make this very clear with our, with our employees, that when they sign their evaluation, they're expected to sign it. They don't have to be in agreement with it. And we're mixing two things here that, in a sense, we're saying, oh, you're agreeing to these contractual considerations, and you're agreeing to the evaluation. You may or may not. They're two separate issues, and I think we need to be careful to make sure we keep them separate, both in good human resource relations, and also in the spirit of what the state law is, and our own practice for many, many decades in this district, to really say, we're trying to work in an evaluation, it's working with the employee, whatever level they're at.
Mrs. Burnett?
Thank you, President Hardy. I'd actually like to disagree with Mr. Dorn. I would not like to see this removed. The way that I look at this, I actually happen to sit, I think most of us have sat in positions where we have been evaluated through something. I get evaluated yearly at my job on things that I do, things I've done, things that are happening, how I program something, how I've handled things. And the evaluation that is given to me, I don't see until after the evaluation has been done, completed by the board. And a, the way I take contractual considerations is, so we give Dr. Minor his evaluation, the board agrees, we all, I'm assuming, are going to have these in front of us, and we're all going to evaluate. This is our, what we would consider for Dr. Minor. Like, this would be, okay, so per this evaluation, I would suggest that we go ahead and extend his contract a year. I would not take it as necessarily that he's agreeing to those terms. This is him agreeing that this is how we see it, and then we will have a, we could have a contract meeting at a later date, a session, a special session, to actually discuss the items in the contract. In my opinion, this is our evaluation and how we feel, our opinion, and what we think we should do for his consideration. So once he signs it, he would understand that, okay, we're either happy or we're not, we either want to extend him or we don't. So that gives him time for a thought process on it, to decide where he's at, and then at a later date, we discuss the contractual agreements on whether or not he would accept the terms, and if he would want to stay, or whatever that would involve. So I'm just a little unclear on how this would force him into something, considering it's just an evaluation. This is just how we are seeing the performance of the superintendent.
Ms. Marotti?
In our previous evaluation forms that we used for at least a decade, from what I can see, if a score of one or four was given, which in this case would be a score of does not meet or exceeds, if that was given, then written comments were required, and that requirement was noted on the evaluation form. And I feel that this practice is incredibly important, because it gives cause to the evaluator to be very thoughtful about the score that they're giving, especially if it's on one extreme or the other. So I'm asking, I asked this for last time we reviewed these documents, and I'm asking again if we could recommend that, that that be added to this evaluation document.
Ms. Maple?
Being still very new to this process, I don't know what, what I'm about to say would actually look like, so bear with me. But I, you know, in listening to Mr. Dorn and Ms. Burnett, it struck me, you know, in my role reporting to a board, my evaluation looks very similar to this, and similar to what Ms. Burnett said. You know, at the end of my evaluation, they use my ratings, essentially, to make a suggestion for what my, whether it's a salary increase, a bonus, whatever it may be, the equivalent of this last page. But as Ms. Burnett said, it functions more as, this is what the board is suggesting, and then that is walked into the next step. And so I guess what I'm wondering is if that would need to be, to ensure that it's not doing what Mr. Dorn is fearful that it would do, how we would go about clarifying the intent of this, or if that's necessary. That's, I don't even know who I'm asking it to. Sorry, bear with me.
Dr. Minor, did you want to speak to that?
I think the board could clarify the intent tonight if they do adopt this template. We could go back to the meeting minutes and look for that clarification. We could also seek legal guidance and how we might include that within the document itself, if that, if this template is not adopted this evening or approved this evening.
Ms. Maple, did you have a follow-up?
I do. So then, thinking of that, of this meeting, being able to do that, and being able to potentially do that in the document, would that potentially be, you know, something along the lines of this, this final piece saying contractual considerations being amended to something like, I don't know what it would, I would need help, but this, but that it's a suggestion?
I actually, Ms. Maple, would support that, and what it could read is, maybe in parentheses, it could say recommendation of the board, or recommended by the board. That way, it's clear that it's our recommendation, this is not him signing on to it, and then we would go into the next step further. I'd also like to throw my support behind Ms. Marotti for her comment earlier with the zero to four.
To the amendment.
Okay, my apologies. Well, I support Ms. Maple, and in parentheses, we could put recommended by the board, or recommendation by the board.
Mr. Dorn, I skipped you.
Okay. In lots of ways, my amendment is exactly, allows to do that. And I, in terms of removing this from the evaluation itself, the little boxes, that could be used, elsewise. We could do that separately, but I would really keep it separate from the evaluation itself. We could use that, also keeping in mind there are other contractual considerations that may be used. And so I think that having an input sheet on this after the evaluation may be a good opportunity for the, for the board to use, and at the direction of the president, whether there is a committee meeting, an ad hoc committee to meet with the superintendent to work that out, or whether it's a group decision, and when we get to that point. But I think it should be taken separately out, and if we're, if people think in terms of recommendations, fine, let's use those boxes, and I would say, add others to keep possibilities. There are other ways of doing contractual considerations, whether it's into retirement accounts, whether it's into leave, professional development. I mean, there are a lot of different opportunities within the contract to address that. But I think it detracts from the evaluation itself, and when the signatures in particular come afterwards, and it is part of the evaluation, it's numbered as part of the evaluation. So we are considering that part of the evaluation. I think it's very inappropriate, and as I said, it is not in keeping with the, what even state law requires, and what our practice is, keep the evaluation. Use this and maybe develop a feedback form from the board for contract considerations, but keep it separate.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. For, just two things. First, clarification, is the, is the amendment to just remove completely Part 9 through the chair?
Mr. Dorn, would you like to clarify?
Yes, as part of the evaluation form. We could use that otherwise, but not as part of the evaluation.
Okay. I have not decided if I support or not the evaluation as is. I do know, having done an evaluation, and mid-year evaluation now, 10 times at least, is that it is incredibly difficult to come to one decision when it comes to the evaluation. Presidents have gotten very creative on how they formulate an evaluation that takes into consideration seven opinions, and typically, all seven opinions are included. So what I, what I worry is that if, because Chapter 9 is asking for one opinion to go forward, how does a board of seven, without the ability to vote, because you don't vote when you do the evaluation, it is a summary of all opinions, how would, how would the board provide one opinion to the superintendent to answer those questions in Section 9? That is, that is my only concern. I do think that this is a vital piece because of everything that's already been said, and I support that wholeheartedly. I just don't know, I've seen how hard it is just to get seven opinions in a summary. I don't know how the board would get one answer to this piece with, with seven opinions behind it, without voting.
Seeing no other public comment, I do, or not, yeah, I missed that again. Getting better. Because now I've realized that we missed public comment on this agenda item, is there any public comments? Seeing none, public comment on this agenda item is closed. I promise I will get better at this, only my second meeting. Mr. Dorn, it looked like you had a comment.
Yeah, through the chair, just a point of clarity, if I understand the previous comments, and I really appreciate the, bringing up the fact that contract terms need a vote and would take place in a regular meeting, which, again, complicates the placement of nine, Section 9, in the evaluation form as part of that. That there is, you would support, the previous speaker would support removing this from the evaluation form, but keeping it in mind for a further discussion beyond the evaluation.
Now, seeing no other board comment, I will put myself in the queue.
Did they want to respond to my question?
I'm sorry. I didn't get that it was a question. Could you please restate?
So, okay, for, just a clarity, I might not have passed, the previous speaker was Ms. Marotti, and she brought up a point that I thought was very important about the voting, and so, which I think also supports the removal of Section 9 from the evaluation form, though keeping it in mind for other discussions post-evaluation. Is, do I, did I understand that correctly, that you feel that that should be separated out?
Ms. Marotti?
Like I said in my words, I am not sure. I have, I'm still thinking about it, I have not decided. I feel so strongly that it should be included, I just don't know how logically it could be included. If other board members have ideas on how it could be logically included, I might say yes. If not, I might say no. So unfortunately, Mr. Dorn, thank you for the question, but I don't have an answer yet.
Ms. Sanderson?
Is it possible that we could have Mr. Siedor look this over and add that suggestion, give us how it, it could be done to help to clarify it, to, to have lividity to it?
Is that a question to the administration, or to the?
Sure.
All right.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, Siedor's office could provide guidance, and I know he, their firm also represents Matt Su, who has this as part of their evaluation model.
Ms. Burnett?
I have a solution, so I'm going to call the question, and then we can reassess. I promise you, I have a resolution for this, because we're on an amendment. So, call the question, and I have a solution.
Unfortunately, a motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, to call the question is not debatable, but does have to be voted on. So now we need to vote on whether or not we are ready to vote on this amendment.
That's correct.
She's already called the question, it's not debatable. And so, Ms. Richardson, would you please?
Let me clarify, we're on an amendment to the amendment, right?
We're just on the amendments, Mr. Dorn's amendment. There, that is one singular amendment, to remove.
But, once voted, we are still in discussion on this.
To the main motion.
Okay, yes, okay.
All right. It's not debatable, Tim, so unless it's for clarification. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the call of the question?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Dorian?
No.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So, Ms. Richardson, given that vote, could you please call the vote on the amendment? Oh, yep, for clarification, the vote, a yes vote would remove Section Nine from the superintendent's evaluation, possibly be considered separately, but it would remove it for the function of this discussion. A no vote would keep it in. Ms. Richardson?
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson? Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Dorian?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
No.
Ms. Maple?
No.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
No.
Motion carried.
Ms. Burnett, we're back on the main motion now as amended.
I would actually like to move to table this discussion and ask President Hardy to put an ad hoc committee together of various members to sort this out, because as Ms. Marotti said, you know, we need to take into consideration all the numbers, all the people, all the opinions and everything. So if we table this, you can put an ad hoc committee together to discuss this, and then we can bring it back up on the next agenda, time certain, or the agenda after that. We don't have to table it for very long. I think an ad hoc committee would be very good to sort this out.
So, a motion to lay on the table, I've studied some Roberts rules in my, my year on the board, means that we put it on the table, and it could die for never being brought back up, so that requires us to bring it back up. A motion to postpone to a time certain means we can pick a date in the future and create a, an ad hoc or something like that. It would be my advice that we do the latter instead of the former, so a postponing to a time certain, since there has been no second, you, you can still correct.
Then I would like to make a correction, and we postpone to a time certain, which would be our...
Second. Oh, you have to do the dates, sorry.
Hold on, I was pulling up my calendar, the second.
December 5th is our next.
Our next regular school board meeting, yeah, time certain, next regular school board meeting.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Burnett, are you satisfied with speaking to your motion, or did you want to speak further to your motion?
Just like I said before, I think that settling this an ad hoc committee, whoever wants to be a part of it, I do not, but I do think that this would be, I just wanted to make that clear, I do not, but I do think that, I mean, even with, my suggestions would be Ms. Marotti, Mr. Dorian, and maybe Mr. Burgess, sit together and sort this out, and then bring it back to the board.
Ms. Marotti?
I support this. I also, I'm happy to be on the committee, had ad hoc committee per the President's decision. Can I also suggest that instead of Sidor, we consult Ms. Dolan? The cost of consulting Sidor, I think, would outweigh an answer on this specific question, so I would actually request that we change that to Ms. Dolan, and that's just informative to the administration, through the chair, to the administration.
So, can I get you to hold that comment?
Yeah.
And make it once we have finished this motion?
Sure.
Or, we'll take it on your advisement. Mr. Dorian, did you have a comment?
Okay. To the postponement, I, just hearing some of the conversation, I think it could be worthwhile to do that, the, but I would ask that through the chair, that perhaps other comments that people might have had, I had one other one about the format, that those be sent through, maybe to Ms. Richardson, and then given to, if, if you decide to do an ad hoc committee, that they would get those, but we would get all of that, so we're not back where we are now in two weeks. I am a little concerned about the two-week timeline, but I understand that to have it there, you know, mid-year, and we can always postpone again if we need.
Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, I support the motion to postpone, and for some of the reasons that others have given already. I do think it would give us time to get this right, make sure that we have legal counsel's opinion on it, and I would be willing to serve on the committee. I do have some time constraints that may be, be important, including travel over the next little bit, but, yeah, that's something that we can work out. So, yeah, I, I support this motion.
Ms. Sanderson?
Yes, I have no problem with Ms. Dolan, I just wanted to have legal counsel.
Could I get you to hold that? If we're just thinking, I will come back, it's okay. Mr. Dorian?
To the postponement, I'm wondering if amending it to the January, I don't have the calendar right in front of me here, to no later than the January 16th meeting, if we have it, well, let me see if, that's Vinson, I'll address the reason why I'm suggesting no later than.
I'm just seeing if it's amendable, I wasn't sure.
I think the dates can be.
Yeah, I just wanted to check. All right, continue, Mr. Dorian, I'm sorry for the noise.
Would there be a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. And the reason I'm saying no later than the 16th of January is that, given the holiday in between here and then, and people's things, we, we need to this in place by, to do a mid-year evaluation, and I'd rather see us take a little bit of time. If the ad hoc committee, or whatever group ever is going to do it, has it ready in time to get on the 5th, which means it has to be ready by next Thursday, that, then it could go on the December meeting, but I'm just afraid we really don't have time to do that, do it justice.
Ms. Burnett?
I would support that, and if the ad hoc committee forms and gets it done before, then that'd be amazing to put it to the next meeting, but yeah, no later than the January 16th meeting, I would support that.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. Through the chair, does that work for the superintendent?
That does.
Are there any other board comments on the amendments? No, not the amendments, the motion to postpone to a time certain as our amendments. We need to vote on the amendments, guys, and then we're going to need to vote on the main motion, so we're all clear. All right, seeing none, Ms. Richardson, and, yep, a yes vote will change the time certain to January, no later than January 16th, and, and no vote will keep the motion as December 5th. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes, only because I wouldn't be attending that meeting.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Dorian?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we are now on the motion to postpone as amended to, so postponed to a time certain, which is now no later than January 16th. Is there any other further board discussion on this topic? Seeing none, I will now put myself, oh, you guys are keeping me on my toes, on the queue, or in the queue.
Thank you, President Hardy, sorry, last minute, I just wanted to thank the board for their work.
Thank you. So, my comments, I'm learning this, you don't get to talk as much. I did have one question, and something that Ms. Marotti asked, and because we didn't do an evaluation last year when I was on the board, so the superintendent evaluation results are public, but the actual discussion is done in executive session, is that correct? Okay, so, all of us new, new members, I wasn't positive. And then my other thing, and please take this with love, Dr. Minor did provide us with these documents a few weeks ago, and asked for us to give him comments and suggestions, and to my knowledge, no one did, so I would really like us in the future to respond to those type of things ahead of time, because while I completely support this, it's not ready, it might shorten the, these, these moments on our board, so, with love. Ms. Richardson, would you please call? Oh, sorry, I am sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Just to find my clarification on the evaluation, the evaluation is public, not all the input, so there's only one evaluation form that will be, in a sense, the summary of our conversations.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote to postpone to a time certain no later than January 16th? So a yes vote will postpone while we do the work, and a no vote would bring us back to the main motion.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Dorian?
Yes.
Mrs., Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. And at this time, we're going to do something else new, guys. I'm going to say we're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will meet back at 8:06.[1400.01] I'm going to say we're going to take a five-minute recess and we will meet back at 8:06. Guys, the recess is over, I need you to return to your seats, please. We are coming back from a recess and having never done this, I don't think I have to do anything more than just state that. All right. And the next item on our agenda is information and reports. Superintendent, sorry, got lost, goals for the 23-24 school years. Superintendent Dr. Minor has provided a list of goals for the 23-24 school year for discussion with the board. The core value is maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire achievements. I don't believe there's public comments on information and reports, but correct me if I'm wrong. Nope, that's what, the beginning, that's what I thought. With that, Dr. Minor, would you like to speak?
I would, thank you. This is a continuation of the conversation we had earlier in the year on my goals. And I tried to incorporate feedback from the board on these updated goals under the strategic plan goals for the district. And so, I'll walk through those goals and some of the action items we have under each one of those and then happy to answer questions either throughout as they come up or after my short presentation. So, under student success, my first goal is increasing the percentage of third-grade students demonstrating proficiency on the spring NWEA math growth reading assessment from currently 45.6% of our students showing proficiency to 50% in the 23-24 school year. As you know, the REEDS Act is in place and that has energized, a renewed focus on early literacy and literacy within our district. Some of the things that we're doing differently to improve proficiency rates with our students is early screenings using the M-class screening, progress monitoring for students that are below or far below proficient, and then additional communications with families through the RAP Plan and additionally with how progress monitoring is going. All schools are also doing a walk-to-read intervention program to ensure students are receiving interventions at their grade level or at their reading level. We've also adopted a new reading curriculum that's adapted to the science of reading. And then we've focused heavily on professional learning opportunities for all staff, including secondary staff, to improve proficiency rates among all students. My next goal under student success is increasing student attendance to 90% for the 23-24 school year. It's a common trend among school districts throughout the country that attendance has slumped coming out of the pandemic. We know one of the biggest indicators for student success is attendance in school. It's really hard to achieve at high levels without being in school regularly. And so, that's something that we're focusing on this, this school year. We're doing that by increasing communication from both the district and schools around the importance of attending school on a regular basis. We're conducting greater outreach by school staff and SSM when students are not attending to ensure that there aren't any barriers at the school or district level that's preventing students from attending school. Attendance numbers for the first quarter are looking promising, and I'm hopeful that will continue to sustain that growth through the remainder of the second quarter and into the second semester. Under equity and engagement, my first goal is to increase position-targeted professional learning opportunities by at least seven hours to at least 75% of our special educators in the Fairbanks-Norstarborough School District. This is feedback from the board that they would like to see, a special education-related goal. This is also feedback from, one of the very first pieces of feedback from ESA when I met with President Logan, was ensuring that we had on-time and ongoing consistent trainings for support staff in our special education department. And so, value that feedback because I think this is an important goal. One of the best way to improve systems is to ensure employees are proactively trained on the proper ways of doing things. We've increased training on CPI and UKARU. And UKARU is a new de-escalation and restraint-free blocking technique that we're using in the district, which hopefully will make our support staff and teachers feel more comfortable working in challenging environments. The next goal, the school district will improve school safety-related climate by at least 3% as evidenced by the spring climate survey administered to students. As you heard a few weeks ago during our Student Support Services presentation to the board, each school has created an action plan goal on improving school climate by 3% at the school level. Some examples from school action plans include better transitional activities and services for our military-connected students to ensure that they feel safe and secure within schools that they're transitioning into, implementing playworks which reduces exclusion of students and ensures all students have a stronger sense of belonging, increase the number of positive notes home from staff to parents and guardians, catching kids doing things well, not just making those calls when there might be issues, encouraging representation of all student groups and displays throughout the schools, providing additional places for students connect, to connect during lunch through clubs, activities, and tutoring, so providing safe spaces for students. And then we're also conducting the SEL research with Hanover to solidify the framework the Fairbanks-Norstarborough School District is utilizing. So, everybody understands when we see, say, SEL in the district, we understand what that is and the services and supports that go along with it. I was also recently made aware of potential opportunities through DED for training on positive PBIS models, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. That's something at the state level they recognize school districts are in need of because of mental health crises at schools and behaviors that we're seeing at a higher rate. And so, we hope to take advantage of that when that becomes available to districts for specific, for specific PBIS models. Under communication and engagement, the goal is to increase the volume and variety of communication with our students, staff, families, community, and school board. This will be evidenced through formal and informal data collection methods such as surveys, direct feedback, and evaluation from the school board. This one's been a goal of mine from day one, improving communication both internally and externally by myself and through the departments I lead. We want everyone to be well-informed and to be as transparent as possible. We do this through increased social media presence, specific communications to staff through emails and memos, new forms of communication such as podcasts, and partnering with traditional media such as the news miner to highlight the amazing things happening in our school district. A part of communication is also listening, and I've intentionally sought out opportunities to listen to stakeholder groups, including our students. And something new for the board, we are in the process of student, starting student advisory teams at our local high schools. And once those are formed, I plan to have a representative from each school advisory team sit on a superintendent's student advisory team to better hear more timely feedback from students on processes that are happening within the district. Under workforce and organizational excellence, the goal there is increasing employee satisfaction by consistently providing relevant professional learning opportunities, removing unnecessary barriers, encouraging fair contracts, and being present throughout the district. So, it'll be evidenced by an increase in engagement, safety, and environment domains in the district's yearly climate survey. This is also foundational to my leadership this year, is building trusting relationships throughout the district. It's at the core of being successful as a leader and specifically an educational leader. Educational leaders should always have culture, learning, and systems on their mind, and you can't get an improving learning and systems if the environment isn't right for that work to be done. And that concludes my report.
Board comments or questions? Ms. Mar-
This just gets better every time, thank you for working so hard on it. I love every bit of it. I would only make one recommendation if that is even a thing we can do here because it's information, so take it or leave it. But I would say that, and I think Ms. Herbie could probably attest, that we have a large variety and quantity of communication skills. I don't know if the district is lacking in communication tools. So, I'm not sure that more tools are necessary, but what I would appreciate, if you would consider, is changing the words, the volume and variety of communications to just engagement. So, it's increasing engagement because I think that's where we may have opportunity to grow, is in engagement through the communication tools, but actually engagement, so it's that action that the communication tools can provide that we already have. But that engagement piece is where we might want to put some energy into. And, and so, right now, we have all of these amazing communication tools that I don't know how we do it with two people, but we do. And maybe focusing on a few that are working extraordinarily and putting energy into that and perfecting and increasing the engagement through those, those tools. So, however you want to word that, but if you want to, please consider.
Ms. Maple?
I just wanted to comment on a few things I heard that I thought were amazing and I'm excited about. You talked about the walk-to-read program and that that's part of working on the, the growth assessment for our proficiency for these third-grade students. But my fifth grader goes, does walk-to-read and she was just telling me how much she loves it and also telling me that she thought that it was preparing her for middle school because in elementary school is an opportunity that she had to move to a different class. So, she had framed this on her own as being like a tool for, for the next, next round, which I thought was cool. And talking about the school climate, the positive notes home, something that I know, I just, you know, in a supervisory role, I know that it takes five positives to one negative to even balance the scales. So, I love that that's a piece of this initiative. And the playworks piece, that playing is integral to learning. And hearing that in this, in the goals for this school year is really encouraging to me, so thanks.
Were there other board comments or questions? Mr. Dorn?
Thank you for these and the continued update on them. I think as you outlined, your goals early in the year was very significant for us as a board and helping us to move forward in the valuation process. And I look forward to seeing this at some point getting incorporated into an evaluation format. I don't know what that will be, it might be a year from now, but, but we might have something in the interim. But I think it's moving us towards something we talked actually about at the time we hired you and the contract and your leadership in establishing a process for really establishing these goals and then how we look at them regularly throughout the year is, I greatly appreciate. And I think it helps us as a board where we're going and keeps us informed of what's happening in the schools in our district on a, on a regular basis, on the front, those front lines, so thank you.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. I would like to, first of all, echo the thoughts of Ms. Marotti and specifically in that we do have quite a variety of communication tools. So, engagement is, is something I think that we, we need to work on. And also echo the statement of Ms. Maple, this is great, this is really well-developed goals. I do have a question. When it comes to increasing student attendance, I'm curious if you've identified so far what the barriers are that students are experiencing and how we can support you in helping to address those barriers.
Yeah, I think that's a great question and I might lean on Sarah because she's had regular conversations with, more regular conversations with principals around potential barriers. So, I don't know if we've identified any of those this year that we're working on and I might lean on Bree a little bit too. Because I know Student Support Services has worked specifically on outreach to parents. And I know I saw a social media post recently from Student Support Services that talked about attendance and the ways that we can break down barriers for students. So, maybe Sarah first and Bree, if that's okay with the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for the question. And I think one piece to know is that, that is reassurance to me, I guess, as I've been digging into this deeper is it's a, it's a problem the entire country is facing coming out of the pandemic. And so, building, you know, we've tried to structure our messaging around building a culture of attendance that the benefits that students get from attending go far beyond just the academic benefits. There are, of course, the academic benefits for students attending, but there's also social benefits for attending, there's emotional benefits for attending, there's just general building routines. And we know that students often thrive on having those routines and those regular, consistent connections with others. We've certainly been working to identify kind of what are those bigger barriers over time. So, transportation, I would say, is a big barrier for, you know, whether it's that we've had to consolidate some bus routes and so, it's just a longer bus route for families or if they're attending schools that maybe there aren't buses that can get them there. There's also, I would say, socioeconomic barriers that we've been looking into and trying to find ways to support students for how that might impact their attendance. There's also, we've worked with our nursing services department and our nurses and health aides at our schools. Sometimes students with chronic health conditions may miss school more often. And so, trying to be proactive in that and finding ways and having systems in support for students. I don't know if that answers the question. I think it's a piece that we're kind of, you know, it's like an onion, I guess, maybe if you'd use that analogy, that as we kind of peel it back, we find more and more layers. And just really working for us, if you're looking, I think a piece of your question, Mr. Burgess, was how can you support us in that? And I think it's just carrying forward that message of how important regular attendance is. And there is a plethora of data that we can, of course, provide you with regarding the impacts, the positive impacts that students who have regular attendance have in their, in their schooling.
Okay, Ms. Gray, did you want to?
Yes, we do speak to a lot of families during this time. And I think during the holiday season, we typically see it as a season that is joyous, we're gathering with our families, but for a lot of our families, this doesn't seem like a safe time or many families are grieving. And so, during this time, we have seen a lot of families calling and needing additional support, whether it's medical support or support and just heating their homes or some individuals specifically in middle school and high school, we're seeing students are caring for their parents more during these times. And so, those are some of the trends that we've been seeing when we are talking to families. But I would like to just add also, there are a lot of students that I talk to that are excited about being at school. And even if they don't feel like they have that family support, they are finding ways to get to school. So, there are so many good things that are happening right now.
Thank you.
May I follow up? Sorry, I should have included this in the original question, but when it comes to the disparities of attendance rates between different demographics of students, are there, is there anything in particular that you're noticing with certain groups that, that, any barriers that we can help to address?
I, yes, thank you again for the questions. I don't know that at this point in time, we have an answer to that question. And as we've really started to engage in this work this year, I think that's the kind of information that schools are uncovering as they are directly reaching out to families, trying to figure out what those, identify those barriers and then try to break down those barriers as much as possible.
Ms. Sanders, and Mrs. Sanders?
So, the question to Ms. Gillen would be, how are our social service managers, what are they reporting in this same area for attendance and the needs that families might be? And I see Ms. Gray's hand is going up also.
I would see the biggest concern that we have is lack of engagement with families. And so, when we are trying to contact families, sometimes we get zero response.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments from the board? Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. So, how will, these are great goals and I, I want to see like the results. So, how will the board be informed of these? And I ask because a few superintendents ago, we had our strategic goals and then objectives that the administration made within them, and then they would present those to us quarterly. So, I'm just wondering what your idea was?
Yeah, my idea was for those that could be updated to the board throughout the year, I would bring those updates in my superintendent report. Or if there's another way that President Hardy would like me to present those, I certainly could. And then those that are more summative at the end of the year, once we have the data collected, I could present on those probably in our June meeting or the first August meeting in terms of what we achieved and if we didn't get quite- in terms of what we achieved and if we didn't get quite to the level of where we're at, tweaks that we'll make to continue, continually improve in those areas.
No other board comments, I will add myself to the end of the queue. I did want to say I support Ms. Marotti's and now Mr. Burgess's leaning towards more engagement over just a variety of communications. I know at one point you told us, or maybe it was in a report, that we had a lot of click throughs for our North Star News and information like that, how many people are actually opening and doing, we've had, you know, pretty low survey results. I think I got an email saying the SEL survey needed more responses. So we know that that's a need and maybe that's another focus that the goal could have that we're not just providing more communication, that we're providing communication that is actually effective. And then my other piece was one I emailed to you, so it's no surprise to you, but for the rest of the board and the public, I did want, and it's the special educator in me, we always have baseline data. And there were a few, namely the increase by at least seven hours where I felt having a baseline included in there, where how much training are we actually providing so that we know what it is and what percentage, if we're using data or data, you should know where we're starting so we know where we're headed. And that could be true for a couple of the other ones. And I did email you that, so no surprise, but if that changes in the future, that was my intent in those comments. There was something else, but I have lost it now. Are there any other comments or questions from the board, go, I remember? Seeing as this is an informational report, there's no other motion. I did want to just procedurally say, because I feel we're getting away from it, that if you do have questions for the administration, you're supposed to direct them through the chair just in the future. It's okay, guys, but, so we're all on the same page. Seeing none, we will close or no further comments, right? We will close that and we will move on to item two, which is information reports, a finance discussion. And we are going to begin this discussion in public. And if at which time it is deemed that we need to move into an executive session, I do have other language to move into that. And Mr. DeGraw, you can let us know when you feel or if you feel you have reached that point.
All right.
When you're ready. And one thing, if you could send the slides, it looks like it's just your spreadsheet. So, sorry, Erin.
Yeah, so some of this will be a repeat, but we have a couple of new board members. So I wanted to start with a report that we did a couple of months ago and just kind of get everybody up to speed. But yeah, I can, I'll get this, these documents to the board here after the meeting, so. I'm gonna go to...
Through the chair, can we enlarge you just a little bit?
If you would.
Is that a little bigger or is that, is that adequate? There we go. All right, thank you, President Hardy. As I mentioned, this, this is a report that I provided to the board back in September. We'll just kind of go over the basics here as well. As we kick off our FY25 budget season, these are the numbers that we'll be starting off with. And just for the benefit of the two new board members and maybe a third here with, with the Colonel, I'll review those numbers. And the, again, I gave the first presentation back in September. Here we are about two months later and surprisingly or not surprisingly, these, this is, might be the identical document I had two months ago. It's very, not a lot has changed. These numbers have held up. If anything, this $19 million floor has probably moved to, we're getting to the $20 million deficit is probably our floor that we're looking at. So 20 to $23 million deficit, if we're including one-time state funding that we're receiving in the current year, that's a significant assumption that we're still working through and we'll see how things play out for our proposed budget. If we don't include any assumption on one-time funding from the state, it's a 28 to $31 million deficit. And then, so just going through several assumptions, there's lots of assumptions that go into those numbers, this kind of a high-level snapshot of the, the big-ticket items. So FY25 projected enrollment number there, that would equate to a drop of just under $2 million in state foundation funding. And then these deficits numbers are including, again, the state one-time revenue, assumption of $8 million that we're currently getting in FY24, status quo local revenue, local contribution there, status quo federal revenue. And then on the CARES funds, those are federal pandemic relief funds that we received three years ago. We've been working through those funds. We expect that we'll, we'll expend the last of those funds in this fiscal year in FY24. So we won't have any additional CARES funds available for '25. Expenditures, so aside from declining revenues, expenditures are increasing, estimate from '24 to '25 is between $8 and $10 million. And then the significant increase there are labor, utility and insurance cost increases. And then assess valuations, I don't want to get into the technicalities of that, I don't want to bog the conversation down, but that could also increase the deficit as well. Below that, we have several different revenue increases related to different levels of a BSA increase. So you can see those. The bottom one, I threw the bottom one, 680, that's what the legislature approved last year. And so just kind of for informational purposes, that, that's the 16 million. And that was cut in half by the governor's veto. And so that's the 8 million in one-time funding that we received. Any questions on that before I go? I want to present, I just have a few talking points on how we'll approach the proposed budget here on the administrative side and then have some different scenarios we can look at.
Mr. Dorn?
A couple of questions, if I might. The decline in enrollment, we've been going up slightly. I know we're a little bit short, but we expect that to decline next year based on what we've counted this year.
So, yeah, our, 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 our enrollment projection for this year was 12,625. We came in at 12,460-ish, so significantly down from that projection last year. So this 12,408 is a reflection of our actuals that we just counted in our 20-day count in the month of October, which was around, between 12,450 and 12,460.
And the, connected to that, the, that's reflected in the foundation decline of 1.8 million.
Correct.
Those two are linked.
That's correct, Mr. Dorn.
And if I might, one more at this point.
One more.
Okay, just to, for clarity, the local revenue, when we stay status quo, what we're talking about in dollars is the 54, the supplemental, including the supplemental, so the 54 million.
54 million, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. Tim took my first questions about the local contribution and what number is being used. But can you tell me what the, what the projected maximum contribution will look like?
Yeah, we're about $15 million shy of, of the cap. So, yeah, when you're talking like the cap, it's right around 70 million. When you combine, when you combine the actual 54 that was allocated plus some, some, what's the term, indirect contributions from the borough to, to the district, yeah, we're about $15 million shy of the cap.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. DeGraw. Maybe this is a point for later, but we were just at ASB and I would like to see the BSA increase 1650 from what they, we agreed on there, just see what that looks like.
Yeah, I can provide that information here in just a minute.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, I'll answer it now. It would be about $12 million additional to the 1150 number right here. So it'd provide about $39 million in additional foundation funding.
If there are no other comments or questions, you can proceed.
Okay. So I just wanted to go through a couple of different scenarios. A full funding scenario here, again, we're showing our different deficit possibilities in a full, now, there's a wide range of definitions of full. This full disclosure is accounting for an 11, the 1150 increase to the BSA. So total additional funding, if the, if the borough went to the cap, just full disclosure, I'm not advocating at this time for, for the borough to go straight to the cap, I'm merely presenting numbers. If the borough did go to the cap and then we received an 1150 increase to the BSA, that would generate approximately $42 million in additional revenue. If they did the 16, it would be 12, it would be 54 million. And that would, so the, the 1150 and the cap funding at the borough would create a surplus of approximately $14 million to the district.
So that surplus is just over our deficit, correct?
Correct. That would eliminate our deficit and put us into a surplus situation.
Room for investment. Mr. Dorn?
Okay, I, I guess that's the question I was going to have, that as we look at projections for a budget, that wouldn't really be a surplus. It may be where we can re, services we have cut, we could return those services or be innovative and find new services and stuff. The REEDS Act types of things could be funded out of that. So it's not saying, oh, we're looking for a $14 million surplus. It just means we would have $14 million beyond maintaining status quo.
Correct.
To, to do, provide services for our students.
Correct. $14 million beyond status quo services in the FY24 budget.
Okay. And with that, if I might, I would just then suggest that we not label it as a surplus, but that it is available for maybe investment or some term that way, because I think that becomes, makes our case for, that we would use that money.
We can change that to available for investment, if you'd like.
Right.
Perfect.
And I do, I think recognizing in terms of that, that part of that is, we need a fund balance also that allows take care of emergencies and to plan for years on forward to maintain, be able to maintain some of those investments as well as the status quo services we give.
Agreed.
Were there other comments at this time? Ms. Burnett?
I would just like to support that because I can't tell you how many times we got nailed on the word surplus last, last year, like, would you actually have extra? They don't like that word, so I would actually support that.
Sounds good.
Go ahead.
So status quo funding compared to FY24, so it's, it would be, if, and again, if we're using the scenario where we're going to assume the 8 million in, in one-time funding, then we're looking at a 20, the $20 million deficit that I referenced earlier. So if we're looking at status quo state funding, that one time, no increase to the BSA and then a $54 million status quo local contribution, then it's a $20 million deficit that we're looking at. These first two scenarios we looked at have certain levels of probability or likelihoods attached to them. This last scenario is something, you know, chances are we're going to get some increase in revenue. Chances are, on the opposite extreme, we get everything that's asked for, 100% probabilities and likelihoods and percentage chances, going to land somewhere in the middle. And so this last scenario is assuming a probably $10 million in additional revenue to the district. It's really easy math at the high end. And so that's, that's how the boards, we move forward, that's how administration looks at scenarios and likelihoods is of the different scenarios. And then that leads to what does that, what deficit or amount for investment, future investment look like? Before I go into, I have talking points related to this, before I go into any other questions.
Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. On your first tab, you state that we have a, we're looking at a 27 or 28, you said, to $31 million deficit. And I assumed that was assuming that, that, and it says local revenue is status quo and state is, oh, is that, well, so what I'm trying to figure out is how we went from 27 or 28 million to 31 million deficit to, then that last slide was 20 million.
Yeah. So, so in a scenario where, a full funding scenario, where the state increases the BSA, they're going to delete out the one-time funding. So right now, in a, in a $20 million deficit scenario, we're assuming one-time funding. If, if they increase the BSA, they're going to just nix that one time. So that would make our deficit to 28. So really, if you're looking at our full deficit, it's $28 million.
May I follow? Yes, go ahead. Thank you. So to clarify, the, the first tab, the preliminary fiscal year 25 budget is worst-case scenario, not status quo, it's actually status quo minus the one-time funding.
Correct. And, and this 19, now I'm on that sheet on the screen, this 19 and that 27 have, we're, they're getting close to 20 and 28.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Okay, so, so the two, when we, when we start to approach the proposed budget, the two challenges that we have, and this will be the case, this is the case every legislative cycle, there's, there's lots of talk about different scenarios. There's, there's optimism, there's advocacy, there's hope. The problem is, is from a budgetary perspective, responsible budgeting, we can't budget on hope and good scenarios or sometimes even likely scenarios. We like to budget, responsible budgeting comes on guarantees and extreme likelihoods. And if it's anything short of a guarantee, what we like, we can, we can inch our way out on the limb a little bit in a responsible manner. What gives us the ability to do that, to inch out, so like even consider putting in one, a one-time revenue sum, is if we have a Plan B, a backstop. So if that chicken doesn't hatch, what are we going to do? Are we just out of luck and laying off 100 people last minute or do we have a backup plan? And that's where fund balance comes in. So, you know, we're looking at a, a, a nice increase in fund balance this year from zero up to in the $7 million range of fund balance. The, the board last year intentionally budgeted 5 million to fund balance. That came in and then we had a little bit additional come in just because of lower expenditures throughout the FY23 school year. So we, 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 we need to budget uncertainties and extreme likelihoods. If it's not a guaranteed certainty, but it's, maybe it's a strong likelihood, we like to have a Plan B, if that makes sense, just to protect ourselves in the unlikely event, however unlikely it might be that, that something doesn't come through. Sorry.
Ms. Burnett?
It's okay. Thank you, Ms. Hardy, President Hardy. So you just said the words, are we laying off 100 people? Are we, not that I really like to focus on the negativity of things, but you know, I'm a realist and so I know that that 10 million is probably very realistic. So maybe we can crack open the conversation on cuts. What are we looking at for things to get to a decent number where we can maybe flatline this at least? at for things to get to a decent number where we can maybe flatline this at least, in a worst-case kind of scenario?
Yeah. Yeah, if we want to pivot to the cut conversation, I would, I would defer to Superintendent Minor for that conversation, start to talk about possible things we can look at, or I can finish my outline remarks. And we plan on talking about that absolutely, but.
I would hold it. I did have one question of myself. You mentioned the fund balance, and just for everyone's memory, can you refresh me, what is our policy stated for, that we are supposed to carry as a fund balance? Because I believe we're below that even with what we allocated.
Yeah, the percentage range is somewhere in the 12 to 15 million. It's 6% to 8% of general fund expenditures, budgeted expenditures. So it typically lands in the 12 to 15 million range.
Okay, you may go ahead.
All right. So the other, so we, we, we really make it a high priority to budget uncertainties. The other challenging aspect of the budget cycle, and this is year in and year out, it comes up, and it's just, nobody's, it just hasn't been addressed, is the calendar is super challenging. So one really unfortunate aspect of the calendar is that, you know, the Borough finalizes its budget in, you know, second week of May. The legislature intends to wrap up its business, I think 90 days is in March, 120 days is April, and, no, April and then May. So I'm one month, so 90 days is April, and then 120 days is May. And then there's additional time, once the budget is transmitted, takes time to be transmitted to the governor, he has X number of days to approve or line item veto. So the calendar is challenging and unfortunate. And, you know, I think, my opinion is in parallel with BSA advocacy, it ought to be calendar advocacy. And there are talks, we, you know, we've had some initial meetings here, leading up to the session, and there is talk about trying to do something early for education. That has been done in the past. And so, but, but that's, that's a good talking point to be aware of, as you're talking with legislators, is timing and try to do something early outside of the regular budget. So, but sometimes that's difficult, depends on circumstances. So, so yeah, budget uncertainties challenge, and then just the calendar's a challenge. So that's, that puts us in a, in a not necessarily optimistic situation, as we try to put together the proposed budget, which is due to the Board the 1st of February. And so when we're looking at the calendar, we have to do an initial budget. We're, we're finalizing at the end of December to work and put it together during the month of January to get to the Board first part of February. And then the bodies that allocate funds to us don't do their business until May, April, May, June. And so it's just, it's really unfortunate timeline. So those are my comments.
Mr. Doran?
I'll start with thanking Mr. DeGraw for, we've been working together on the budget, with the Budget Committee and such. And as you mentioned, it's the uncertainties, what do you, how do you budget? And one of the things that we've asked the Budget Committee to consider giving in, providing input on, is, and our next meeting is the 29th of, so next week of November, to hammer out the priorities. But one of the pieces is to get some feedback from the whole committee, stakeholders, on the idea of, do we just budget on what we know for sure, so the minimum, and then build our list of add-ons? Went through that this past year and was able to add back things. Or do we budget on some intermediary point of what we need with a listing of what would get reduced if that funding doesn't come through? It carries a lot of risk, and there are dates for notifications of certain staff and things of this sort, when we don't know the funding, that at some point we have to fish a cut bait. But just to get a bit of a feeling, and we're pleased with the Budget Committee, we have a broad perspective from the community represented there. But to get kind of their feelings, obviously, the administration's going to have to figure out what's the most practical way. But what we're trying to broaden that conversation, which we've seen in our community, where do we, where do we ask? What do we plan for? And how we, how we do that. So it's the add-ons versus the, the planned reductions based on less than optimal funding. And I won't use full funding, because there's lots of definitions of that. So, but optimal funding for what we need to serve our kids. But I'd wanted to let the Board know that the Committee is, is trying to look at all different angles, and at least give us some feedback that way.
Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. Interesting, I've never considered the Borough's timeline. Has the Borough ever, the Borough Assembly ever considered using an earlier timeline? We would have to do it as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that I can answer that question with code, code requirements, Borough Code ordinance. I'm not sure.
Dr. Minor?
Yeah, I know there's been conversations with Mayor Ward and myself about trying to potentially push up their timeline as well, with understanding that all of these timelines are difficult in our budgeting process. And so Ms. Hardy and I are going to meet with Mayor Ward and Presiding Officer Fletcher next week. And so we hope to have some additional information that'll go into creating the proposed budget.
I have a second question.
Yep, go ahead, Ms. Marotti.
Thank you. I know that we were planning to meet with the Interior delegation, so those are state friendlies. Is there any legislative priorities or talking points about this that we can bring up with them at that time?
Yeah, I could provide some, some talking points to the Board, yeah.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes, Mr. DeGraw, some of the interior legislators are looking at our foundation formula. How does that, pros and cons of, of opening that up? And I know the last time that was done, they wanted to get out of it as quickly as possible, but just curious about that mindset of the formula.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a complicated, loaded question that you're throwing out there, Ms. Sanderson. There's, the pros, the pros are, you know, looking at outdated components of the model. And, and there could be, one of the, one of the hot topic ones is the regional cost factor. That's always, you know, how, how much cost layer, that's in the, within the funding model, Anchorage is the baseline, and then communities around the state of Alaska, cost of living compared to Anchorage, they get a premium. That's, that's always controversial in every state. So, you know, if, if, and it also depends on what, in what context the formula is opened. If, if it's open for a desire to reset the table and improve overall funding, that's a good thing. If it's opened up, you know, to, to, to do other things and to, to not look at expanding funding, then that's not necessarily a good thing. The con is certainly that it takes a ton of time. It's a very lengthy, involved process. And so when that topic has come in with, up in meetings that we've been in, we always say, hey, you know, let's look at the formula, but we need funding now, you know, so let's not, let's not depend, let's look at the BSA. And in concert with that, let's, you know, if you want to, let's open it up, but we, let's not delay an increase to the BSA, you know, at the expense of waiting around for a rework of the model, a super complicated process. So I don't know if I answered your question, but.
Yes, I just know that there was some conversation around proposing guardrails and those kinds of things. So I'm just curious. And hopefully, we'll have some in-depth answers and suggestions of our own, if we face that in conversation.
Yeah, I would generally just say, if it was done in the, in the spirit of resetting the table and hitting the reset button, you know, to, to provide adequate funding to districts, I think it would be a good thing. It's just, again, it takes a lot of time. And so, hey, let's, let's not let the boat sink while we build a new boat. Let's plug the holes and, and, you know, so.
Thank you. That answered my question.
Were there any other board comments or questions? Mr. Doran?
I just want to say thank you, President Hardy, in terms of, I think, having this, this in public, because I think it's really important for the public to understand where we stand on our projections, what does face us. So we put a budget together, and, you know, and the budget is two sides of that revenue and, and the expenditure, with the bottom line being our focus on kids and the, what we can actually offer them in services and then, and ergo, offer our families in services.
With that, Mr. DeGraw, was there further information that you believe the Board should know, but are worried that it might adversely impact the finances of the district?
I don't necessarily have any big items at this point on my end. I don't want to speak for Dr. Minor. I also know, at some point, you know, we're interested in feedback from the Board on if, if reductions are needed in our proposed budget, a direction that the Board would like us to go in. I know that's, that's been on our minds. So I'll just leave that there.
Dr. Minor, did you have?
I would agree with the statement of Mr. DeGraw, that I think we covered the information that we wanted to cover this evening. But we definitely would be very interested in hearing potential cut considerations from the Board that you may want us to research. President Doran mentioned that the Budget Committee is certainly going to look at that, and that'll be one piece of feedback. But I think it is important, in the proposed budget, it's not going to be as easy as other budgeting cycles we may have gone through. In the past, we've been able to rely on increasing PTR by a bit and making smaller incremental cuts. Obviously, all of those have hurt, and it's been a death by a thousand cuts to where we are today. But we really are looking at some substantial deficits, and there's only certain things that get at millions of dollars worth of cuts. And so if there's things that either you would like us to research from an administrative standpoint, not saying that you support it, but that you would like us to look at it, that would be helpful. If there's things that you're like, I'm not even going to consider it as a board member, that would also be helpful. Because as a superintendent, I would love my proposed budget to reflect the values of the Board as closely as possible, so that as we get into that recommended budget, it's not this back and forth on why administration proposed this over this. If we can be as aligned going into that process as possible, I think that saves energy on the advocacy side to say, this is really why we need the funding, so that we can either restore these positions or make these investments within our school district.
Mr. Doran?
For my two aspects of question for that, timeline for that, I know that the, our Budget Committee is looking to have a letter by the first part of June that will be, to be sent to the administration and the Board, and then presented publicly to the Board in January. But this is the timeline of getting it ready. So feedback from us, timeline for you on that, and then I have a second question.
Can you restate that first date?
So, I, so, the, we're looking early December to be able to have that to you as, as quickly after our meeting on Wednesday night, we're going to try. And Mr. DeGraw and Michelle Nielsen, with their help, have really offered to say, pull our ideas, to get the Committee's ideas together, and then get that to you and to the Board, so that we have, that it's a piece of information. And we'll do a public report at the January meeting.
I think that's perfect.
So early December for you from, feedback from us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My other question is, if we have read on, and I want to be real careful not to get into individual names, because they're not here, and we can't do it, and I'm talking about legislators. But am I correct that the $175 million one-time funding did have an overwhelming support from the Legislature? I want to say that was a 58-2 vote. And my understanding was that none, neither of those two were interior legislators. So are we getting any read at this point from the legislators statewide, that strong support for that something, either one time or BSA, because it was such an overwhelming support? Do we have any read on that now?
Go ahead.
Of course, this is speculation. And so the read I get is that we'll most likely, and hopefully, get additional funding this school year. That might be at the same level of the one-time funding. Of course, we would like that to be within the BSA, and we're hopeful of that. I might refer back to President Hardy and her question at the chamber, because we did get to hear from our Interior delegation there on kind of where they're thinking, where we might be, and in terms of the conversations they've had too. So if I can kind of kick it back to President Hardy.
I did ask at the chamber luncheon, you are correct, and that's, all of, at least the House Interior delegation voted for that 680 increase, if they would be advocating to stand by that vote. And it was a very mixed results. And that's another reason why we are asking our community and our Board members to advocate to our legislators. And I think everyone is aware, and I believe it's been noticed, that we are meeting with the Interior delegation on the 28th. So that is a great time for all of the Board members to have questions to ask. I believe the entire, the entire delegation will be there. And this is a great opportunity to hear from them directly.
If I might say that one of the things that I have to the Legislature and all the legislators, including our Interior delegation, then to say thank you for that vote for the 175. They, one, albeit one time, but that was a significant one time that they put forward. And I, I want to be able to say a big thank you to them for that. Yes, and then I appreciate the read, because as we go forward, that every vote is a separate vote. So, but I think to make that appreciation, that they really made a statement last year, and hopefully we'll come forward with it.
Were there any other further comments or questions from the Board? Mr. DeGraw, did you?
Yeah, just one final, just, I just want to, Dr. Minor mentioned, there's not a lot of little things that can get at a $10 million deficit. It takes big things. And so, you know, I'm going to throw numbers out here that are just merely for context. It's not, I'm not putting anybody in the crosshairs at all. It just, I, I need to provide context to Board members and to the community. You know, we, we had, we had several, a laundry list, Mr. Doran has referenced several, several times, the last couple of years, we've had a laundry list of different support staff positions that we've looked at, a bunch, kindergarten aides and counselors and safeties, et cetera, et cetera. A cumulative list of those, those positions we've had equal about $4 million. And it's, it's lots of positions. So, you know, just shy of half of a $10 million, if, if we're facing a $10 million deficit. For context, an increase of PTR of five students in every class across the entire school district equals $8 million. Okay, so I'm providing context here, you know, so a two and a half student increase to every class across the entire district would get us $4 million. Okay? So that's why when administration throws out things like, you know, I'm just going to, I'm just going to throw stuff out on the table here. You know, we, we don't have the luxury of not talking about stuff. When we talk about an additional school closure, you know, that might save a million or a million and a half dollars, this is why, is because, you know, it's going to take large personnel items to get at a $10 million deficit. When we throw out things like, do you, do, do we want to look at contracting out custodial services? A million to $2 million in potential savings, that's why. It's not because we want to, to. It's not because we want to, to, you know, bring, have hard conversations, nobody wants to do that. But that's the reason why we bring up the, adjusting the calendar, the school calendar, things like that. Because those are, are, are potential seven-figure saving, savings items. And so the Budget Committee, as Mr. Doran referenced, we have those items on the table. We want to get feedback from the committee. And we also just want, you know, board members to be thinking on those items and, and provide, you know, myself and Dr. Minor, feedback on, on what your priorities are and, and as we, as we get closer to, to the proposed budget, so.
Move to extend to 10 o'clock without the intent of going to 10 o'clock.
Second.
Second.
Last on the agenda here, so.
Mrs. Burnett.
10 o'clock, really, Tim? So we're talking a lot in general about cuts and budget. And we all know the very real situation we're in. And I just wanted to make it clear that I am not in favor of laying off another teacher or support staff anywhere in our district, and I understand where we are. I'm just not in favor of that. And so I beg of the board that as we get through this budget, especially to our new board, board members, to dig deep, to really look at the budget, really look at where cuts can be made and just dig as deep as you can. Because again, I am not in support of one more teacher or support staff going anywhere, that's all.
Mr. Doran.
I'm glad you mentioned that because, through the chair, those comments. Because I think that this may be one of those times that we're going to need to not look at a cutting lens. But really, what do we need to serve our kids? Even if, just to maintain the status quo of this year, which represents accumulation of, I know we debated sometimes, approximately upwards of $50 million that we've cut over recent years. So we've done the cuts. We may find some small amounts, but if just to keep status quo without having to lay off, inclined to leave that as my bottom line and then really advocate. And if the legislature, the governor of the borough does not come through and the biggest handle is on the legislature and the governor, then they really tell us what they want in public education and services to kids. I don't think we're, we can any longer say we can absorb cuts, we can just cut. They have to tell us they don't want to serve students. And so I, I'm, I'm leaning towards taking, yes, a riskier, but a more solid piece of at least what we got this year in one-time funding, that, that that be our baseline. And, and then we see where we can move from there and really say, this is what we need for our children.
Any other board comments or questions? Seeing none, since we've already moved the board comments to earlier in the meeting, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that all that is left is a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.